Are to approve formally the 150,000 in reductions to the budget. That have been suggested by Superintendent Connery and Superintendent Hunter. As we began to put together our slides for the public hearing, we we realized that without a formal approval. The slides can get a little bit confusing and complicated because we make continual references to a potential reduction. And my feeling was after looking them at looking at them myself that it just really was too confusing. And I didn't want to. I didn't want to waste time in the hearing trying to explain that if should questions arise in the public. It certainly doesn't suggest that our budget work is over or this is the final budget that we will be putting forth for town meeting. But. I thought it was, I thought it was potentially necessary to again. Make things much more clear in the presentation. So I'll open it up to discussion from any of you now that you've all seen this slide as well. And. Go with it. Any discussion?
Yes. I stated before that I think the. Taking the 150 is premature. I continue to think it's premature. We have yet as a school committee to really dig into this budget. We're still at the up or down. On the superintendent recommendation when I into the budget itself, in my opinion. The 150,000 represents about. One third of one percent of the $49 million budget. I think it's so token. That it doesn't really represent progress. That is going to be meaningful to us for the FinCom. In addition. We're faced with. Some unknowns next year. We don't know what we don't know. But already we know we have a shelter coming in. With unknown costs. Recently, we learned that we have taken $113,000 out of contingency this year.
That was part of last year's budget discussion. That was realized this year. So there was not 113,000 in there.
No, I understand. I was simply going by the slides that we received.
Right, but we didn't have any money in there to use. We had a.
I understand, but the statement was that we took 113. We reduced contingency by 113. I mean, I can pull up the slide.
Yeah, a year ago this time we did.
So, so we're told that we were told in February last month. That we reduced contingency by 113 to pick up the new positions this year that came in after budget.
We were just to get to guideline last year. Yeah, we did that last.
Simply. Clearly confusing, but. The, the point is. If we have. $11,000 in last year's contingency. That's what the data says. If we are proposed, or excuse me, this year. If we have 40,000 proposed for next year. It defies imagination how we could be ready for something equivalent to another 113. Next year, if we're already pulling back. Contingency and pulling back circuit breaker. I think it's a reckless move and it is premature. And I would advise against it.
Do you have thoughts on that?
I, I do think I strongly believe that the FinCom would like to see if we've identified a reduction to see it. Your concerns about risk, we share that. We know that there's discussion of potential funding for the homeless shelter. And that's really the biggest contingency next year. It's a huge contingency. And our budget. Does not reflect the cost of the homeless shelter. We'll be clear on that. We'll need to work with the school committee in the town if we have to figure out a way to pay for that. So we, I don't see how we can then right now go out and say we're going to increase our budget by. A million dollars for us to make, I'm making that number up. So I feel like if we communicate that we're presenting a budget does not include the cost of the homeless shelter, we're being transparent. There's other. Risks, there's other potential savings that happen. You know, potential retirements, there's potential additional having to fund a position that we don't have now. Those. Are very difficult to predict. And we could put a number in today that will be different in a week that'll be different. And, and so I've just seen that since we've set a budget in December. So I do feel like. The 150 is something we've identified as we have these reserves. They're fairly significant. We don't want to destabilize the budget by taking too much because you can't continually just spend down the reserves. So I feel like we're, we're, we're making a. Not overly aggressive cut, but a cut that. Supports the FinCom's desire to see a lower number while not compromising our ability to. Fund things that we need to, that we have now that we need to fund next year. Again, drawing the line at this doesn't support. Potential possibility.
And I guess I'd add that, you know, 50,000 of that is case transportation getting, getting us clean numbers. It would not be transparent of us if we realized that savings and didn't bring it to all of you and suggest we reduce the ask by that amount. So. That's a different discussion than using circuit breaker. So I think our job is to bring you comfortable recommendations, knowing we are not at guideline. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't suggest that you vote that so that we had a, a number reflective of what we need.
No, I certainly understand your position on it. Mine is different. I consider a, a token, a move, not significant. Your words were huge contingency known. And yet we also know that contingency is about unknowns. And so if we already have a known huge contingency and then we have the unknowns. I don't think we're, I'm not, I'm not here arguing to increase contingency. By any means. But to do a U-turn on our circuit breaker plan and to take that hundred, that $50,000 saving in addition at this point in time. I, I think it's ill advised. And I think this, the FinCom, I'm going to guess, I can't speak for them. I think. They would be of a like mind. They don't want to increase the odds that we're going to do some kind of emergency ask midway through the year. Again, that's simply the way I see it. I'm not asking anybody to. Follow suit. I would prefer not to increase the risk at this point in time. It's already, it's already pretty daunting.
So the only thing that it's interesting, so you articulated the 150,000 as a percentage of the overall $45 million budget. And that's fine. What I viewed, I contextualized the $150,000 reduction. Through the lens of looking at the delta. And when you look at, we were able to bring down the delta that we were at by close to 20%. Looking at it through that lens, it's, it's a very different perspective. So I think that, that those reductions are in fact meaningful. Because to me, what we are trying to collapse is the original 5.01 versus the 3.3. And that bringing it down from 5.01 or whatever to, to 4.7 is about. Now 20%, which again, I think it's just, I think it's significant. So.
I would just pose this question, Alexa. To take 115, excuse me, 100,000 in circuit breaker now, would the FinCom really understand that as a. Cost cutting move or a kick the can down the road and exacerbate next year's problem, which we already have claimed to is going to be very significant. I'm worried they would think the latter, that we simply kicked the problem down the road and.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Made no meaningful effort toward the financial stability that they, they are striving for.
You buy a level service budget with. Risks that we're comfortable taking.
Yeah, I don't feel like case it down the road. I have seen reductions in other districts where they really tap reserves at a very large level. Much larger than this and they destabilize their budget. I don't feel like that's doing this at all. Again, our risk will relate to homeless shelter. There is bill that proposes some things that may. Substantially cover their costs. There's a timing issue. There's things we might be able to work through, but you know, it's a risk. Doesn't mean it's. Necessarily not going to be offset by grant costs, but we don't know that it will. We can hope. So we do think it's important to highlight the risk. But again, I think the, the, the 50 is known. We, we better revise, better estimate from case. And the 100, we do feel like we have the capacity to use 100 of the reserves without kind of compromising our ability to use those again next year. I think if we went to start to talk about trying to close the gap 500 by taking all reserves, then we would destabilize the budget. So. It's, it's a balance. I feel like we've. Made kind of the balance of having funds to support what we need to do next year with. Trying to deliver a little bit of a better number. To the FinCom and close the gap, but we would like the recommendation to approve our budget.
So I considering, I think there's going to be so many challenges next year. I do not support. Because we can only think we can carry over circuit breaker and I think we need to have as much. And I appreciate your recommendation. I'm not saying, I don't. I just think it's a better, more conservative approach to have as much carryover circuit breakers we can have next year. So. I understand the 50,000. That's something we're reporting. We're not. It would be. Bad of us not to make them aware of the 50,000 savings.
Anyone else?
I'd love to put that 50,000 in contingency and return it to the town if we don't spend it. And reduce the likelihood of some, some emergency intervention mid-year. It's not a lot of money. If it was a lot of money, then we'd I think be doing something very impactful. In our efforts to communicate to the FinCom what we're doing.
So I got.
It just doesn't rise to that level, in, in my opinion, although I certainly respect. The, the superintendents have a different conclusion. Certainly respect that.
Can I say something? So I guess I am more comfortable with taking the advice of what Bob is recommending to us. He feels comfortable with the risks that we're taking. He's working with these budget numbers every single day. And, and I feel as though his recommendations are sound recommendation. I think the bigger question is, as a school committee, are we looking at. Are we comfortable with the reductions list or maybe those cuts or not comfortable with that? Because the only way to get to guideline is to make cuts.
We can go in and disagree. That's.
Right, which is fine, but we haven't even had that discussion.
Correct.
I didn't, yes.
I've been advised that conversation will begin next week. I'm correct.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping to have had it in a couple of budget specific meetings we've had thus far. That didn't happen. That's okay. So I, I mean, I think. I don't think, I think these things can happen in succession. I think today we need to determine whether we accept. The recommendations by. By Bob and then subsequent to that, I would, I mean, before we get into. I would like to hear from the finance committee first, which will, will happen tomorrow night. And then I think we'll have opportunity to discuss more. And on Tuesday.
And I guess the only purpose in having this vote is so the slides are really clear to tomorrow night.
Well, well, I mean, well, no, I mean, I, I mean, again, I have hoped to have this vote. But, but regardless, I think, yeah. But yes, the fact that we didn't take the vote is now having adverse effects on the ability for us to clearly communicate with the public. I hope, yes. If, if in fact we're comfortable, we accepted the recommendation, you know, I, whatever. So. So anyone else have discussion on this before we move to the. Resolution and then.
That, sorry, my voice is terrible, but my question, I guess if you're not comfortable with the 150,000 in two pieces. What are you looking for? You're looking for more sizable cuts?
I'm happy to have a conversation next week to look at what the school committee would consider to be a cut list, which may or may not be the same as that became the course from Dr. Hunter. For tonight's purposes. I would not be comfortable certainly with. Reducing by virtue of taking circuit breaker money at this point in time. I would accept moving the, the case adjustment forward. But even that, I'd be more comfortable with that in contingency because we. Have claimed so many, many times that fiscal 24 and fiscal 25 is going to be very, very tough. So to take this very small reduction to make a token gesture to the FinCom and heighten our writ. I'm repeating myself again, well, very sure. I, I think is unnecessary and wise and I don't think it's going to. Be very impressive to the FinCom. It's just my sense of.
I haven't. I, I haven't thought of it as a very small token at all. Like I agree with Alexa that this is, we're looking at a $600,000 delta versus. I mean, of course, we're looking at a broader $45 million budget. But my feeling is that $150,000 is actually quite a lot of, a lot of money towards closing that delta. I also think. Dr. Hunter has said that. Last year, we took too, took on too much risk by reducing circuit breaker and other aspects in too, in too many ways. And if this is a. A risk that is more moderate and feels. Like we can still accomplish our goals, taking on this. These cuts and risks, I'm inclined to believe that recommendation.
At some point we'll know. But it won't be right away. You've got a, you've got fiscal 24 before us.
Yeah, but that's true of any budget.
Exactly, exactly.
All right. We good with any more discussion on this? Anybody? All right. So next. Oh, I guess they were all, they weren't discussions. They were all action items. All right. Sorry about that. So. We, I guess I will entertain a motion to approve the $150,000 or to adopt the $150,000 reductions as recommended by. Assistant Superintendent Connery to the budget.
Move to amend.
Okay.
A move that the motion be amended to. Reduce the budget at this point in time by $50,000 thereby not taking circuit breaker money. At this point in time.
Okay, so we need to vote on court's amendment first. Correct?
Discuss it first and then vote.
Any discussion?
I continue to be comfortable with the recommendation of Assistant Superintendent Connor.
Any other discussion? All right, so I will take, oh, I don't need to take a roll call because we're here. All in favor?
I'm.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so then we go back to the original. Vote for the reduction. Of the 150,000. All in favor?
Wait, we need a second on that.
Okay. All in favor? I, all opposed.
No.
No, that's the motion passive. All right, so moving on to. The resolution that was forwarded. I'm going to turn this actually over to Carrie and Tracy a little bit because this sort of. They. Tracy and Carrie in my absence attended a legislative breakfast on Friday where all different types of advocacy were, were discussed. One of which that got a lot of attention was the 14%. Increases to out of district tuitions. If you guys want to give like a brief, quick update about what that legislative breakfast was sort of about and sort of everyone got from Lori. This resolution that I would like to vote on so that we can get that off to. Our representatives.
Yeah, I'll just give a quick synopsis of breakfast. So Carrie, and you can jump in, but I know your voice is a little shaky. Carrie, Lori and I attended the breakfast. Rep Cotaldo and Gentil were also there with us. And it really was a day of advocacy for the rising and escalating special education conflict. So I think I made all of you aware that earlier this year, Alexa and I as chair signed. A letter that went to our legislatures. So this is, and so this came across as ways to advocate. It was a whole discussion of how can we advocate. To our legislatures to increase circuit breaker, et cetera, et cetera. So you probably all had a chance to read this. Other school committees are doing it and it is an opportunity for us to do this tonight as Concord Public School Committee. To sign this and send it to our legislatures.
And we will do the same, I think, on Tuesday for the region. And what this resolution outlines, I think for both us, the public and our representatives is. You know, just, just how much. This, you know, out of district tuition impacts the budget and how any additional funding from the state could help. Alleviate some of those budgetary pressures that we are obviously all facing. You know, in, in, in moving forward. So. Bob put all of our specific Concord Public School members in there for your review and I opened it up to discussion.
And I guess the only thing I would add is that I would love to be able to go to the FinCom hearing with. You know, another way that we're trying to advocate to bring in more revenue, well, not revenue, but more money to our districts to help our budget.
Any discussion?
Well, I wonder if you could help me with the. Threshold for reimbursement of 47,000. Can you tell me how that gets calculated?
They take the, the foundation budget for people, which is not the same as the per people expenditure average. It's a little bit lower. And they take four times that. So that's the baseline. It's $47,000 and change this year and they reimburse 75% above that. So the first 47 you are covering in your district by itself. And then the rest they reimburse 75%. That's out of district, in district. They don't even look at your cost. They have, it's harder to qualify. They look at kind of a state average. And specific hours. So it's, it's a lot harder to qualify for in district programs. But.
That's helpful. The, the reason I asked is based on your explanation. It means foundations around 12.
And change.
Which surprises me. I thought it was higher. So, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. And then there's one minor, but nonetheless factual error in this, I believe. That I'd love to see cleaned up. I'm sure it was not intentional where it reads that OSD increased the tuition by 14%. I don't think that's their prerogative. I think their prerogative is to, is to approve tuition increases up to. But they don't declare what the screens are going to charge. So, so I think it would read, they have approved the tuition increases. Up to or not to exceed.
This was M A C boilerplate.
I know that. It's sort of a stickler for accuracy, just so people understand what's really going on here.
So do you want to change to that?
Was certainly, yeah, yeah. I mean, otherwise it's. Known to be factually not quite correct and we know it. Let's fix it.
So we can still vote and it's subject to amended language. Great.
Yeah, we changed the language now before there's even a motion. I might suggest just hear this out, see what you think. OCD has approved tuition increases. Up to 14%. Because we've already had our first one come in at 13 something, right? Didn't we hear a week or two ago?
I would have to tech with Debbie. I'd be shocked. It's close to the cannons 14.
Oh, I have no doubt. It's been 14, you know, effectively 14.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve. This resolution to be sent to our representative. Oh, who moved? Who moved?
I moved it, sorry.
You moved it? Cynthia moved. I'll second it. All right.
One additional addition at the bottom would be just all of our names will be included. Alexa Anderson Chair, work booth. I'm going in alphabetical order. Tracy Morano, Cynthia Rainey, Carrie Rankin. And I would ask, Ayesha, would you like to be included on this?
I'm sure.
Okay, and Ayesha one.
All right. So all in favor?
I.
I, all opposed?
And this is going to say reps and Senator Barry?
All right. I will move to adjourn our brief meeting. So, so done. All right. Portion of the meeting, but I don't want to get rude when I.
All right. And I would like to call the Concord Carlisle School Committee to order. Welcome to our Charlotte members. And we will start tonight with public comments. And just as a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you're in the room and you would like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me and you will be called. To speak and you can share your name and address before you speak. We will go every other starting in the room with public comment and then go onto Zoom and you will have a limit of three minutes in a public comment as per our policy is not to exceed 20 minutes. Any public comment in here? If you have a blue form, you can just submit it to me. Yes, it would be great. Any other blue sheets just while we're waiting for this to go around? There is no microphone, but you can just take a seat at the chair and please state your name and address.
So, thank you.
The owl is.
It will, yes, the owl will look at you and pick you up.
Okay, and I need to get my timer.
My name is Robert Egri, 80 Wildwood Drive, Carlisle. I congratulate the school administration and school committee for providing the taxpayers of the detailed line item budget for 2023. Today, I will discuss an equally impressive document for its unusual transparency, namely Superintendent's Fiscal Year 23 CPS Recommended Budget. Presented by the Superintendent Dr. Laurie Hunter, and this being 2023 is still operationally relevant. As I'm somebody who is deeply and holistically interested in diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. I was and still am very curious about how and what is being spent on this very important issue. So I turned to page 13 on said document and to my surprise and horror, I saw the following item. Salary Administration 160, I Director 97, 970, 23, 55%. And there's a footnote in the bottom of the same page in the bottom. Yes, in the bottom. The following can be read with all its grammatical innovations. The I Director now added to the general fund and 85,701 for in guidance teacher salaries are now being charged to Medco Grand Wash. These numbers are truly shocking and allow me to elaborate. It truly and holistically pains me just to bring this issue up or whether this coincidence is some kind of racist dog muscle. Now in case some members of the committee with human resources background are having difficulty with higher arithmetic, please note that point six is three fifths. Furthermore, I would like to remind the superintendent to, in case she's not aware of the storied history of our original constitution, that the following was written in Article 1, Section 2, Class 3. Representatives and direct taxes shall be apportioned by adding to the whole number of free persons, including those bound to service for a term of years and excluding India's not tax. Three fifths of all other persons. Is this really a coincidence? Please note that according to the Department of Education, the average salary of teachers have conquered Carlisle in 2020. It was 110,665 dollars. Which is 12,695 higher than the point six the superintendent apportioned to our first DEIP director. Below the average. Anyone who honestly and holistically functions well, son, this is your. Anyone who honestly and holistically functions well, son, this is your favorite word, is looking at this must recognize that such coincidences cannot be accidental. Furthermore, showing Mr. Nyometius path breaking work, the first in the history of Concord Karla High School, in a footnote, to a footnote that might hearken that one's memory to the dark times of the back of the bus, that is an insult by itself to all taxpayers of this school district. And I may just also explain why it has fallen deaf ears, my prior suggestion that internet school free for students visit the continent of the future. Or was it just a case of distributed leadership, a subject that is the academic holistic specialty of the Superintendent Dr. Laurie Hunter? In this case, being one part of said distribution of salary administration, be diverse or insulting, which is point six, and the other would be buried in a footnote. Where which is distributed leadership or a racist exploitation? What is the real salary of the DEI director? And while we are at that subject, what is the total cost of his department, of which is the director?
Thank you.
For your attention.
Thank you so much.
By the way, here is the constitution.
Hey, if I will go online now, if anyone online has a public comment, you can use the raise hand feature and Joyce to breath.
Hi, thank you for having me. Thank you. I live at fourteen hundred Lowell Road in Concord. I, this is the third time I will be sitting in a meeting, looking at the equity report and I'm just wanting to say thank you for all the hard work that's gone into this. I think every time I sit in these meetings, I look at the numbers and there's lots of ways we can look at statistics. And I, I applaud the efforts. I know Andrew mentioned that the raw data is thousands of pages and I'm glad we don't have to sift through that. But I think I just want to raise up that we all keep in mind, we're talking about real human beings in this. I think I was most moved by the quotes in the report and that these are, you know, real children coming home with real stories. Their faculty and staff who have been impacted by inequities. And I guess I would just challenge us all, if, if we don't have kids in, in those categories that this report is meant to address, that maybe we talk to friends who do. Because I, I really believe that the best change is going to be, is going to come by one-to-one relationships and conversations. I know I'm always impacted more when I hear what's actually going on from students and parents. So I just want to raise that. And finally, on a positive note, I looked further on the agenda. And I just want to add that Thoreau is also having an international food festival as we've done in past years and it's March seventeenth at five thirty to seven thirty. So you can add that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and we'll go back to in the room. Anyone else in the room have a public comment? I don't see any. I'll go back online. If anyone else online has a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. And okay, I'm going to close up public comment. Thank you so much. Under reading of the minutes, everyone should have received the minutes from our October twelfth and our January seventeenth DEIB meetings. Anyone have any comments, corrections? Okay. All right, so I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of October twelfth and January seventeen.
So moved.
Second by Senator, in word discussion. All in favor? Okay.